Item number four is to recognize Gills. We're passing that around to the new business. Tim, you're going to start us off.
Yeah, Commissioner, I've just got a couple of items. First item is, is we have an inmate who's currently in the hospital. He's going to have to have an amputation done. We're having to sit on him 24 hours a day. And he's probably going to be there seven to 14 days. He's in St. Francis. So, we're having to rotate that through. With that, it's going to come expenses of overtime and different things that put guys on him, but we have to, we have to wait with him. He is an inmate that was found guilty by a jury. And he has not been sentenced yet to DOC. So, I've actually got DA's office working on trying to get a sentencing date. The problem that we have is, we're going to have to get him here before we get him sentenced. He has a sentencing date, but because of some pre-sentence investigation stuff, it has to be done and other things. It's set a little ways out. I'm asking to see if the courts can look at it and move it up. That way, we can get him to DOC. That way, medical, I mean, medical's going to be on us. But if we can get it somehow rectified quicker than beholden in case something else happens to him. There is a special fund out there that we are aware of, that we are working on figuring out how to get access to and how to tap into it. But it will pay one large medical bill per county per year. So, we are, we are in that. It's called the HAL fund or something of that nature. It's got in excess of several million dollars in it. People haven't been utilizing it, but I learned about it last week. And we're waiting on Sheriff Association to send stuff to get on that. The other thing we've learned is, we've got several medical bills from the hospital that they're asking for payment. We are in the process, we've got a letter, I'm in the process of finishing drafting to get it to the DA's office to get approval. But I'm going to send it back to the hospital because the hospital cannot charge us anything over Medicare rate. So, we're going to send that back requesting all bills be, all bills be looked at, analyzed, and billed at Medicare rate. So, I mean, it's not going to, it's not going to fix the problem, but it's going to slow the problem down a little bit so we can get that bill and get an actual, actual list. And then, we have a program that DOC is working on giving us access to, to go in and we've got to become medical billers and coders and look up the codes and make sure it's actually the Medicare rate before we pay the bill. So, that's where we are on the medical side of that. Also, I have a letter that came in my email this morning that I'm going to have to be placed on the agenda for next week. It's to engage us in a class action lawsuit against DOC with other counties. There's several, several other counties that's already, commissioners have already talked about and approved it for the sheriff to go ahead and present the letter and get the attorneys on board to work on our behalf. The lawsuit will basically be that DOC would be paying us back for everything that has been J and S, judgment and sentence, at the cost of incarceration, not at the $27 a day that they're paying us. Plus, for the time of the gavel, which means sometimes you might get sentenced on Monday to DOC, but it might take the DA's office two weeks to get the paperwork done. Well, what they do is, they don't pay us for that two weeks. They're entitled to pay us through their own attorney's opinion that we're supposed to be getting paid for that. The only way DOC has told us that they will pay us is for us to sue them. So, you know, as, as of this morning, I know that there's about 60 other sheriffs talking to their commissioners about signing this engagement letter. I know at CODA this week, they were going to have a little deal on that. But due to the fact we have a budget meeting this week and other things, I'm not going to be able to go. And I figure today they're going to do it, it's on the budget meeting day. So, y'all will be here too. It's on Thursday, it's a breakout session today.
I planned to go Wednesday. I was going to go both days, but I'm just going to go here.
Okay. So, that's what we have. I will get that letter customized to Haskell County and ask that next commissioner meeting, that the board approve it and then chairman sign off on it so we could. You know, my thought process, if it's $10,000 we get back, that's $10,000 we didn't have. But, you know, it's in excess of $40,000 or $50,000 that they owe us. But whatever we give back's better than nothing. It's not going to, it's not costing us anything to jump on this lawsuit. These attorneys out of Tulsa are doing it for a percentage of whatever's collected back from DOC. And it's a, it's a law firm that has came to us. There's actually a couple state representatives in this law firm that has fought for us against DOC. And their own attorneys are telling them, Attorney General of Oklahoma is actually saying, you can't do that, you've got to pay these guys. But DOC's told us to sue them. And so, that's what we're going to have to do, get our money. And the only other reason to do it is if we didn't get any money, but to get a court ruling to say from that point forward, they have to pay it. If not, we're going to be like we are right now, still get our $27 a day and hope for the best. So, other than that, we've covered some more stolen property this week. Guys have been really busy. We're doing transports, like I said, we put Mitch Dobbs on full time and a full-time deputy but assigned to the jail. He's doing courts on Mondays and Tuesdays and be our courthouse security for those days. All jury trials, he'll be doing those. But the days that he's not in court, he's been on the road. Like I told in the jail meeting, we had 11 transports for one day that we couldn't, you can't do them in one day, you've got to break them up. But we're staying on the road a lot. So, other than that, any questions? No questions, that's all I have.
Inmate count?
I do not know Randy this morning. Like I said, I covered shift last night because our night shift deputy had to go to the hospital. So, 3 o'clock this morning, I rolled in and was back out.
Tim, what's the difference between what they'll pay and what the $27 and that?
Well, last year, last year, our jail fee was about $39. This year, it's down to $33, $34. The difference is because the inmate count that we had was a lot higher, which brought that cost down. Statute says that they'll pay up to a certain dollar. Anything over that, there has to be a special hearing. We don't reach that dollar amount, therefore, they should be paying us our $33, $34 a day. Now, our jail, our jail incarceration fee, let me rephrase that. I think it's $36 or $37. But part of that money is, $2 of it goes to the DA's office, a couple more dollars go to the court clerk's office. But the actual jail's cost is about around $33, $34 a day. But that would be what we would be collecting. Right now, the way it sets is they pay us the standard $27 no matter what. But our argument is, is the AG has said that you cannot do that, that's unconstitutional. You have a, you have a duty to pay them that unless the fee's over a certain amount, which would go toward like Tulsa and Oklahoma County, bigger facilities. You have mental health facilities and different things where their costs would be higher. But for us, we wouldn't fit in that category. And we continue to, we continue to work that with DOC until they, until we get it rectified because we're losing, we're losing a lot of money a year because of that.
Do you have any idea how much that will be now?
Randy, it's going to be in excess of $50,000 last time we checked. That was a little over a year ago because we're, we're continuing to send inmates. So, it's not something that Mona's working on from the last time we broke it down to now because we thought the problem was rectified and it was going to be, they weren't going to, it wasn't going to be rectoractically, it's going to move forward. Well, now DOC's saying, we're not even moving forward. You want anything, you're going to sue us. So, now, we're going to go back and try to fix the problem.
I had a busy week last week on my end. We worked the guys out at the fairgrounds trying to get ready for the upcoming events and everything. And we helped put metal up on the inside of the fairgrounds. They were stringing metal and bolting that stuff down. And we cleaned up a lot, helped paint a few things around there. I mean, we really worked the guys a lot over there this past week. Got another full agenda this week just because we got so behind last week. Just a million things came up last week. We're going to continue on with Moe. And we got the ball fields again, got a ball league. Thank yous for getting out there and doing stuff. Guys are working real hard. Last Thursday, myself and Commissioner Story, there was, it was a last minute kind of change of schedule on meetings. We went up and met on Thursday with FEMA and Oklahoma Emergency Management about disaster number 4222, which goes back a few years. And I'll let Commissioner Story kind of give the details on what actually happened up there because it directly affects him and his district. But I believe it was a very positive meeting. And from what they let us know, we're expecting good things here within 30 days or so. And I'll let him explain that, what they told us.
I said it all, I mean, they just said we, they didn't say something about October 1st.
Yeah, it was, it, which they gave us a letter, a determinative findings that they're going to be sending 130, it should be right at $137,000. And if they don't see something, if we don't see the money, I asked them what our recourse was if we don't see that money. And they said you'd have to schedule a meeting with the director of Oklahoma Emergency Management and FEMA Region 6 Director in Denton, Texas, if we don't see the money in that first week of October. So, if we don't see it then, we're calling up, we're scheduling that meeting and getting it done. But they couldn't give us a reason as to why that wouldn't happen. They're expediting the process. They started working on it right then. I actually got an email on Saturday from Michael Teague, who we had worked with, that the letter, that first letter they discussed was done. And so, they're, so far, they're adhering to their word.
Will you apply that, Paul? Will you apply that to your PD?
Absolutely. And then it's, um...
I did have Matt Webster and Donnie Robinson come look at the assessor's office where the computer system is. Donnie said he feels like if you get the air going flow through there, that less people carry it. There's two things that we can do. We can get a unit and put up there, which is on the back wall, which they, there is room to put into that hallway. I call it hall closet. So, anyway, Matt is going to give an estimate on that or just put a unit in there to cut out the wall. We'll have to look at the structure of the building and see if that can be done. So, when I get further information on that, I'll follow up.
All right, Donnie, more new business? Item number six, approved commission proceeds previously.
I'll make a motion on number six.
One second. Yes.
Item number seven is going to be approved blanket POs. About $1,000 out of the SSF to fleet corps. We have $16,000 out of the SSF to performance posts. Now, the SCA, we have $600 to fleet corps. So, we'll have three blanket POs this week. I'm not sure if approved.
One second.
Part and third.
Yes.
Yes. Item number eight will be signed. Program resolution that was approved, 94, 2018, on Project ZP 33965, sandboard low water crossing replacement.
We just need to sign that this is over a mafia at Row on the low water bridge. And I put in for, had engineers come look at this like we talked about last week. And they have approved it. So, we just need to sign this so we can get on it. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Yes.
Item number nine is going to be discussing city of signing office 2018 monthly report for health department, election board, county clerk, treasurer, assessor, and court clerk's office. I'll make that motion.
One second. Part and third.
Yes.
Item number eight will be signed. Program resolution that was approved, 94, 2018, on Project ZP 33965, sandboard low water crossing replacement.
We just need to sign that this is over a mafia at Row on the low water bridge. And I put in for, had engineers come look at this like we talked about last week. And they have approved it. So, we just need to sign this so we can get on it. I'll make a motion.
Second. Senator's advocate.
Yes.
Item number nine is going to be discussing city of signing office 2018 monthly report for health department, election board, county clerk, treasurer, assessor, and court clerk's office. I'll make that motion.
One second. Part and third.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, I think it's a lot. I'd like to back up a minute. Like I said, we, I'd like everybody to know that we have a budget. We're going to set the budget. Thursday, 10 o'clock was when it's going to start if anybody wants to be there. It'd be a bit OSC extension over here. So, it'll be 10 o'clock Thursday. of $5,000 to DND available for September, leaving the balance 15,069.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The auditor said that if each one of them on the back of it.
Sign us up.
Yes.
Yes. Did he bring the permit with him? Did he send it with him?
No, we didn't.
He did not? It's all after everybody, what is item number 12, either they'll be here and either they won't. But item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs.
The DA's. The auditor said that if each one of them on the back of it.
Sign us up.
Yes.
Yes. Did he bring the permit with him? Did he send it with him?
No, we didn't.
He did not? It's all after everybody, what is item number 12, either they'll be here and either they won't. But item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs. Item number 12, sign appropriate transfers, appropriate certificate POs.
I'll make a motion on item 12.
On item number 11, I'm going to ask that we, I'm going to make a motion and we table it, and maybe they'll show up.
All right. All true?
Yes.
Part three?
Yes. I remember that thing that's been drawn, and I like that motion.
All true?
Yes.
Senator Zager?
Yes.